Good evening, and welcome to the February 28th meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. Kusakian, roll call please.
Councilmember Garpetian. Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item?
Next item is the flag salute, which will be led by Councilmember Najarian, followed by the invocation.
Thank you, everyone. Please join me in the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. February is Black History Month, and tonight this invocation pays respect to every African-American for their contribution to the fabric of our American cultural tapestry. Educator and Black leader Booker T. Washington accurately observed that one man cannot hold another man down in the ditch without remaining down in the ditch with him. Our nation has come a long way, climbing out of the ditch in which the African-American was kept throughout slavery and institutionalized prejudice in this country. Let us pray and hope that the wounds of those who were treated inhumanely throughout our nation's racially fractured history will heal over time, and that never again in our lives, nor in the lives of those who follow us, our children, our grandchildren, and others, will one American hold another American down in the ditch for reasons of race, religion, or creed, or any other ill-conceived reason or purpose. Let us pray that our city leaders act in accordance to our founding principles of this great country, that all people are created equal, and together we are united as one. Amen.
Amen.
And may the minutes show that Councilmember Garpetian has arrived. Next item, please.
Next item is the report of the clerk. The agenda for the February 28, 2017, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, February 23, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and next?
Presentation and appointments. Three A is agenda previews for the meetings of Tuesday, March 7, 2017.
Ms. Spears?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, for March 7, we have no business agenda items. We do have a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority to commence at 3:00 PM. This is Director of Community Development and Community Services and Parks, and this is regarding an assessment of fair housing planning in accordance with federal grant funding requirements. That evening for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is a water conservation and education program report. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, contractual issue as it relates to Grayson Unit Number Nine, gas turbine. Director of Community Services and Parks, this is transportation services related to youth programming. Director of Community Services and Parks, environmental impact report for the Wilson Middle School multipurpose field project. Chief of Police, this is regarding the 2015 U.A.C. grant. Under adoption of ordinances, we have Director of Community Development, this is regarding the ADU urgency ordinances. It's the extension if it goes forward this evening. Under Action, we have two items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, agreements with Sequoia Telecom Associates, Wilcon, and One X Two for Fiber Optic Business Plan Implementation Support. And Chief of Police, this is regarding the agreement with Caruso Management Company for supplemental police services. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we have some very special people to thank tonight. As you all know, the recent rainstorm was the strongest storm in the past six years and created an unfamiliar scene in Los Angeles and around our community as well. As a result of staff's dedication to providing exceptional service and ensuring the safety of all residents, power outages were brief, fallen trees were removed safely, roads were cleared, and folks who needed emergency assistance got it within minutes. I want to give a special thanks, we all want to thank, the city employees who worked during the storm and helped keep our streets safe, clear debris, turn lights back on, repair water breaks, and maintain the high level of service that Glendale residents rely on. If you watch the screen, I will give you some of the numbers of incidences that they were responsible for handling. Feeder outages, seven. Electric calls, forty-seven. Sheared hydrant due to mudslide, one. Water main break, two. Private trees cleared, eleven. Public trees cleared, nine. Broken hanging tree limbs cleared, six. Trees cleared, ten. One incident involved clearing a tree that had fallen on the roof of a Glen Oak home, which was pictured in the slide. So tonight, I'd like to ask all of the public works, the parks, police, fire, and GWP staff that are in attendance tonight to please come to the podium. We have a special thank you for all of you. If you're still watching the film, please come up. I know I went to a home on Sealito that the hillside had come down on them. They had no electricity. It was an older woman with two grandchildren, no electricity. I was about to run home and call the GWP to try to get help for them, but as I walked down the driveway, who should appear but GWP and the crew? And they told me that they would have the lights on and electricity on in a few minutes, and I know that they did. So we want to thank you by presenting you with pins from our city, so if I can ask all of my fellow colleagues to come on down with me. Would you like to say a few words? I know you were up all night, so would anybody, you know, for I don't know how many nights you were awake and working out there in the pouring down rain. Does anyone like to say a few words? Chris? Anyone? Go ahead.
I'm Brian Brown, GWP. And we'd like to thank you for the recognition, for the work the guys did. You know, we have an outstanding group of guys out of the UOC, as Public Works does too, and these guys are pretty dedicated employees. I mean, to send them home when people are out of power does not happen. You know, there's people out, these guys will not go home. They will stay here until people's power is back on and everything's taken care of. So we have a very dedicated group of men and women working out of the UOC, and I'd like to thank you for the recognition.
And we thank you. I've gotten emails, you know, thanking, not thanking me, and thanking all of you for the fast work that you did. And I know I heard on the news where people in LA were hours without electricity, but you guys were on the job and you did a fantastic amount of work. Thank you so much. So we'd like to present these to all of you. I'll take them down when we can.
Did you fill it out? You haven't filled it out? Are these two events? Not yet. This one's an event. I know which one it is. She sent the email.
Thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
My granddaughter.
Yes.
No one younger could have done the work you guys did.
Thank you. Picture?
Yes.
Let's do it.
Does the seal behind us?
Oh, do I smell burning? Flip it around.
Next item?
Next item is the consent calendar, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
Do I have any?
And there is one card submitted from the public.
Four C. Okay. Would anyone like to move the other two items?
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. And would you please read four C into the minutes?
Four C is Chief of Police regarding DNA mixture interpretation software, probalistic genotyping software. I will not try to say that three times quickly. Licenses, annual upgrades, technical support and training. C1 is a motion authorizing a purchase order for Niche Vision Inc., resolution appropriating $100,000.
Do we, I just have a speaker on this card, so Chinook Ramirez, please.
Thank you very much. Safety and security is crucial to the survival of a healthy, vibrant, and safe communities. A lot of your Latino criminal gangbangers have deliberately bent and/or damaged their vehicle license plates, the front and the rear of their vehicles, so they won't be easily seen or recorded on street cameras. I've noticed over the years, if you look at all these gangbangers and their vehicles, you will notice that their license plates are tampered and/or not visible to the naked eye. And so, and a lot of them have also wiped with bleach and faded the numbers and the letters. So it is important that we enforce the vehicle code because it is a violation, and the Glendale Police Department and all law enforcement agencies must enforce the rule of law. It is a violation. Put them in jail and report them to ICE and hasta la vista deportation at full throttle. Again, we must enforce the rule of law. God bless Donald Trump, and that's what he wants to do, is make us safer all over, not just in Glendale, but all over America. Again, go after these gangbangers. Let them straighten out those license plate numbers and buy new ones. And God bless Donald Trump and Jefe, who brought back balls and masculinity to America. So enforcement of the rule of law is now the rule of law of America. Again, Donald Trump wants no criminal illegal felons or gangbangers vandalizing and creating public safety nuisances. And again, America is a priority. He wants to make America safe, secure, and private for all legal law-abiding citizens. God bless Donald Trump and our United States military and all our beloved pilots. God bless America. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for the item, please?
I'm a four C.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. And next, we have?
City Council and staff comments.
Thank you. Comments? Councilmember Garpetian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Sorry I was late for a few minutes, but because of the last storms, we had few, as was indicated today, we had some trees down, and I was at one of them, the one on Opech, and I got a call when I got there, the crew was there, the cranes were there, and Rubik Gulanian was there. So I want to acknowledge Rubik and Public Works, as well as GWP, they did a great job removing the trees without damaging any more of the pool equipment. It was almost hitting the pool equipment. But the other thing is, I think some of these trees, the pine trees especially, we need to have maybe a survey or inspection done. I know we cannot go into the root of every tree and find out how deep they are or how stable they are, but let's, I'm just asking to look into having a plan to inspect some of these trees and see if the ones, if we find out that some of them are really dangerous, to remove them before they fall in next, next storm. Pasadena has the same issues, some of the trees were falling on the houses, and it was very dangerous. The other thing that I want to talk about is there was an article published in news press regarding SCAG and the feasibility study for the streetcar in Glendale. And just a point of clarification, at the end of the article, it says, "SCAG's allocated funds will now head to a review committee before final consideration." The final consideration is done, the funding is done, and it's coming to Glendale, so just wanted to make one clarification on that. Also, on a lighter note, on the fun stuff, there is a car show being, do we have that, Mr. City Clerk? Do we have that flyer?
I'll bring it out.
If we do, if not, I can just read over it.
Yes, we do.
There's a car show being organized by Virigo Woodlands Dads Club and the Rotary Club of Glendale, Noon Rotary, unfortunately. I hope that the Sunrise Rotary will join this group. It's called Cars for Cops, and all the proceeds will go to Glendale Police Foundation. It will be on April 2, 9:00 to 1:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Lot 34, 1726 Canada Boulevard, across the street from Virigo Park. You can bring your cars if you want to participate. It's $25 a car. You can showcase your car, you can meet your fellow car lovers and hang out and raise money for a good cause. It's called Car for Cops, and all the proceeds will go to Glendale Police Foundation. What else do I have to say, Madam Mayor? That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had talked about a bicycle event for the city of Glendale, similar to a ciclavia, called an Open Streets Event that Metro was going to be sponsoring. I would like everyone to know that that is coming to fruition. Staff has been working very hard on that, and we have a graphic for that, Mr. City Clerk. This will be called an Open Streets Event, June 4, I believe, is the date it's going to be. We're going to be closing off Brand Boulevard, and this is called Glendale Meets Attwater. So it's going to be Glendale Boulevard, South Brand, excuse me, South Brand to the northern part of Glendale Avenue, I believe, is what they call Brand as it extends into Attwater. And that will be very fun. The funding for this is a little tricky. Metro is kicking in $180,000. I believe Glendale has about a $44,000 share of that, but we're going to see, because we're early on in the process, we're going to see if we can get it fully funded by Metro, so Glendale doesn't have to, and let the cities at the end of the line worry about funding if there's any left. Or some are actually dropping out. They're not fully committed to this. So good work to all the staff that's doing this, and we'll give you updates as it gets closer. It's been a fun event in other parts of LA County, and I think it'll be fun also here in Glendale. The next item that I hopefully would get some support on would be a review of our parks and library impact fee, historical perspective, and perhaps going forward to make sure that the new units that are being built in Glendale are paying the appropriate share towards parks and library. I don't want an exhaustive study, I don't need to start the nexus study, but just a discussion as to whether we think it's important to look at that and to see if it's properly set at rates that are current to the expenditures. Would anyone support that?
Sure, I'll support that.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I'd like to bring forth is to have staff bring us a discussion of a traffic mitigation fee. This is a fee that is separate from the parks and library impact fee, but actually a fee which would be assessed new construction units to mitigate the traffic and congestion impact that they cause. There's a lot of moving parts to that, and I'm just asking that it come forward and we take a look at that and see if such a course of action is feasible. Would anyone support that? Okay, I just want to explain it a little bit more.
I'll support it.
Yeah, it's, we charge new development for the impact they have on parks, but this would be a study to see if an impact can be specified and identified on traffic. If we have to widen a lane, if we have to put in extra crossings or something like that, that they would bear their fair share. And of course, it's not an action, but it's just an attempt to study that. And the last thing, Madam Mayor, I want to clear up. About two months ago, maybe even longer, I suggested that the city consider joining the Contract Cities Association. We're currently members of the Independent Cities Association, and I want to, I got some feedback recently that some of our employees felt that that indicated that we were going to immediately begin contracting out the services that we currently provide. And I want to assure everyone that that is not the case, and my sole intent on becoming part of the Contract Cities is they have a much more robust professional development program where the other cities get together and talk about issues that are of mutual interest. And it does not in any way mean we're going to be contracting out or indicate a change in our focus on contracting out services that we currently provide. And perhaps, as council members, we understood what Contract Cities do, where they meet, how many people are in their organization, but members of the public and our workforce might not have understood that clearly. So I just want everyone to know, it's not a shift of our policy, it's just a more robust professional development and networking system that Contract Cities have.
And it was also my understanding that they have kind of more clout in Sacramento than some of the other organizations do, and so that was another reason that we joined. It was not about us contracting out.
Right.
Any other comments?
Just a short comment.
Sure.
So this ciclavia, or this mini ciclavia that's slowly materializing, I remember when I was mayor, I asked specifically to have the ciclavia in the city. So to the extent the staff is working on this, can we make sure that all council members are updated on the progress? Because I haven't had a progress report in, I don't remember since when. That's all.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I have a lot of good news, I think. First of all, I want to start by mentioning a summit that was held here in Glendale that perhaps a lot of people didn't know about. It was Los Angeles Consular Summit. We had 40 council generals come to a summit to be introduced to our city, our businesses, our staff. I know Councilmember Garpetian was there. It was quite successful. It was held at ABC. They did a panel discussion on the news media and how they are actually trying to bring the truth to all of you. It ended up being a very successful event, and hopefully we can do it again. I want to give kudos to Dan Bell for bringing that to fruition, and Jennifer McLean and all the staff, Eliza and all the staff in economic development and in management services. It was quite an honor to meet all the council generals from different countries. It was quite an amazing event, so I thank you all and congratulate you all.
I think someone else wants to be called out who did hard work on that.
Who would that be?
Dan Bell.
I called him.
No, it wasn't Dan. I don't think Dan had anything to do with it. I think he said.
Christine.
Christine, Christine, yes.
Christine Powers. Where is Christine? Yes, yeah. She's not, yeah.
Yeah, let's give credit where credit is due.
Exactly. Christine was instrumental. Thank you. Thank you all. Last night, I attended the Glendale Young Professionals' fifth anniversary and met some of the supposed, maybe leaders of the future, CEOs and professionals, and I told them possibly even a mayor in the group. So that was quite an honor, and I congratulate them for having the forethought and the leadership to bring about an organization that is like a right arm of our local Chamber of Commerce for young people. I would like to request from Mr. Gulanian and Public Works, I've gotten an inquiry, there's some concern about the crosswalk at Cedar and Broadway, and I think that was just installed. I drove up Broadway to see what was going on. The traffic does go very fast there. I can see the danger that could possibly occur, and so I'd just like to have staff look into a possible traffic light at that location, just to ensure the safety of our residents and make sure that that is a safe crosswalk and no one is injured. I also want to give kudos to our police department. I know Carl Povolitis was here, I don't see him, but I received a very nice letter from the mayor of the city of Whittier, and he was thanking our police department and our city for those that attended the services for the fallen officer in their city. And he just said that we have people representing us, and he thanks really fine people representing us, and he thanks us for reaching out. So I wanted to make sure that the police department and those that attended those services realize that it was appreciated. And finally, and this is very exciting news for me, and as you all know, April is the Armenian genocide month of remembrance, and in our city, we particularly celebrate or remember the week of the 29th. A few years back, I started to talk to Commissioner Ara Oshagon about bringing Eyewitness, his art exhibit, to Glendale. It had such a profound impact with the city of LA and the people that went to see it, and I thought it would only be fitting that it come to our city as well. And so in conjunction with the Week of Remembrance here and the grand reopening of our library, our central library, he is going to erect, construct the Eyewitness in our Central Park. There could be an exhibit on the Paseo connecting Brand to the library, so people who are shopping and dining in that area will know to come to the park. It will be there the Week of Remembrance and then until about the first week of June. So I'm really happy about this. I'm proud of Commissioner Oshagon for having produced this wonderful work of art, and I thank Cindy Cleary for her work at getting this accomplished, and I look forward to celebrating the Week of Remembrance in a lot of different ways, and especially with this art exhibit. It should be fairly, just a fabulous work for the city. It will bring a lot of people here, I know, and it's a real feather in our cap, I think, to have him as one of our community members. I think, to have him as one of our community members on our commission. He's going to be the curator of the Museum of Remembrance in the library, and we will also get to appreciate and enjoy his, his art. And that concludes my remarks. So we'll look forward to that. I have a couple of cards for our next item, which is?
Community event announcements, followed by a three-minute general public conference.
Thank you. Lisa Bubari, followed by Evelyn Harrigan.
Good evening, Mayor Devine and City Council members. My name is Lisa Bubari. I am the founder of Heal Within, a healing center in Glendale, and also an event called the Three E. And this year, we will be celebrating our fifth year. Thank you. The Three E is an event dedicated for women, which we call it, this year, our theme is ignite the best in you, because it's about open heart and mind to experience a day of a lifetime, because women worldwide are clamoring for more insights, tools, knowledge to help them achieve success and fulfillment in their life and at work, personally, professionally. This day will be a day to reward themselves. So we've got incredible speakers. Our mistress of ceremonies will be Palmyra Perez. Our speaker, guest speaker, is going to be Silva Kotikian. She is the co-director of Glendale Adventist ER. And we have incredible, powerful panel of speakers, which is Dr. Nellie Farnoudi Zahiri, our own Lisa Glickman from Glendale Arts, and Jenny Mankarian, plus myself, who will be speaking. It is a day to unveil our inner strength, recognize our thought patterns, and change things. We also have vendors, there's going to be drum circle music, and including lunch. So I believe this will be one of the most powerful $97 spent for the day of being empowered and inspired. Our speakers will be talking about their challenges and how they have overcome challenges to be where they are, and we will be helping our audience to touch emotionally and through soulful experiences and exercises, guided visualization, and so much more. The day is on March 11th. It will be held at the Embassy Suites in Glendale, and it's an all-day event from 9:00 to 4:00. And you may purchase the tickets on our website, which is healwithin.com, or it's on my seat, or it'smyset.com/ThreeE.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you so much.
Always a good event, always a great event. Congratulations on your fifth.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And next Evelyn Harrigan, and then Lilia Avagyan.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council Members and City Staff and Glendaleians. Thank you for the opportunity to announce again the upcoming Crop Hunger Walk for Glendale and the communities of the foothills. This is our 22nd annual walk.
Kind of makes five look like.
We are so proud to be doing this. It is March 5th, one week coming up this Sunday at 1:00. We begin and end the walk at Incarnation Catholic Church, but this is an interfaith, community-wide event. We are among the top 110 crop walks that happen, over 1,000 crop walks happen across the United States, and we are up there 110th place in raising funds for, we help, our, our local group has raised funds for three food banks, food bantries, and two food voucher programs locally and up in Tahanga to serve these, these communities. Overall, we've raised over $428,000 in the past 21 years, and I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the many hundreds of walkers and their sponsors and recruiters at various local churches and the community that have come to our crop walks to help raise these funds. In particular, I would like to mention our appreciation to a donor from Vallejo Drive Seventh Day Adventist Congregation, who's been a very big supporter of the walk. So I, please just show up if you don't have a walker registration envelope already, just show up and we will register you. You can go on the internet to crophungerwalks.org and then fill in the map there with Glendale, CA, and you will see information about our walk. It does not cost you anything to register. Please, Glendale, come out to the walk. Many walks charge anywhere from $35 to $50 to walk, and we don't charge anything, okay? But we do want to raise.
And the date, the date and time?
Sunday, March 5th at 1:00 PM. Kickoff is at 1:30.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Barpetian has a question for you.
So where does it start again?
Starts and ends at Incarnation, and we go down Brand Boulevard to Lomita, across to Louise, back up Louise to Wilson, then over, whoops, one, one block to Brand, and then back up to Incarnation.
And you have another one?
And yes, we do have a permit. Yes, we do.
Absolutely. And you have another one on March 26th?
No, this is.
That's another event. Okay, that's what I was confused.
Thank you. Thank you very much. March 5th, 1:00, Incarnation Church. Right, show up. Thank you, thank you. Lilia Avinyan?
Good evening. The March 26th is mine, actually, but I'm gonna start off, since Mayor Devine mentioned about commemorating Armenian genocide, I would actually like to start off with thanking the Glendale community for commemorating Armenian genocide for the past 17 years on a city level. And this event that I'm actually gonna present right now, it's commemorating Armenian genocide again, and I, not only I, we, all the organizers thought that it is very important for city of, for the event to happen at City of Glendale, since the city, as I already mentioned, commemorates it, commemorates it for 16 years already. So this is a play in conjunction, event in conjunction with Voice of Armenians from New York and the Armenian entertainment production here based in Glendale. And this is a play, theatrical play, based on a book by a Turkish writer, Kemal Yalçın, who currently lives in Germany because he had some hardships in Turkey after he tried to publish his book about Armenian genocide. He, when he first tried to publish it, it was destroyed right away, the 3,000 copies, and then after he went through lawsuits and all kinds of stuff to be able to finally publish it. So this play had been performed six times already, thrice in East Coast, twice in New York, and once, once in New Jersey, and three times in Armenia, and all the times, all six times, the Turkish writer was present. Now the Turkish writer will be coming to Glendale, so we would definitely like to welcome him for his brave actions for the past decade, and he will be there to, again, apologize for the Armenian genocide and talk about the Armenian dissents who still live in Turkey, and they are hidden Armenians, or they're hidden Muslims, but in reality, they're Armenians and Christians. So they just try to present that they're not Armenians or they're not Christians. So again, it will take place on March 26th at Glendale High School, and to conclude, I would just like to invite all of you to present, to be present there at the event, because it is important to definitely show the support and show that we all do commemorate it and we care about the history. Thank you, that's all. If you have any questions, you're welcome.
Thank you so much.
No? Thank you.
This is on March 26th?
March 26th at Glendale High School.
At 6:30?
Yes, it starts at 6:30. Okay, thank you.
Very much, thank you. Next item, please, that concludes my cards.
Next item, under public hearings. First one, 98 is fire chief regarding 2017 Annual Weed Abatement Program. 981 is a motion to approve abatement order directing the abatement order, directing the agricultural commission, director of weights and measures, to abate the nuisance on each declared parcel.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and...
Oh, do we have? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Mayor, I was just informed that the winner of the Academy Award for Best Picture is Moonlight. No, I'm kidding.
No.
We do have, sorry. We had three cards for the three-minute oral communications portion.
Oh, 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 these, so we should go back to the oral communication?
Yes.
And then we'll read this.
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, you're forgiven.
But I can't take a joke.
Okay.
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. I stand before you here today in the midst of some gnarly times. I am a freelance journalist, and after interviewing hundreds of people, I've witnessed firsthand the ever-growing divide between Americans. It's in times like these we need a unifying figure we can all turn to, a beacon of headlights that can guide us down the dusty road. I was 11 years old when I found out my parents were getting divorced. I felt lost, alone, bummed, and it was in that melancholy that my dad took me to see The Fast and the Furious, where for an hour and 47 minutes, I transcended my worries because I had just met my new hero, Paul Walker. Afterwards, at Carl's Jr., I thought about what Paul taught me. The most inspiring thing was the fact that even after Toretto beat him in that first race, Paul still managed to bed his sister, which is pretty inspirational. And I just want to go off the book here, it wasn't just Fast and the Furious, he inspired me in a ton of other movies as well, you know, Varsity Blues, Skulls, Meet the Deedles, and April O. Paul's on-screen legacy was unfortunately cut short, but that does not mean his impact on society must be cut short as well. Detroit has the Robocop, Philly has Rocky, we need Paul Walker. That is why I'm proposing that the city erect a 12-foot-tall steel statue of Paul Walker in the downtown area, and I'm also proposing that it be sculpted by none other than Damien Ortega, best known for his installation of White Cube 2003. And also, I believe he's from here, so that would make it extra special. And I would like to thank the council for their time and truly hope you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Sharon Weisman?
Thank you, Mayor Devine and council members and staff and everybody listening. I'm Sharon Weisman from far north Glendale, and I'm here this evening representing the Glendale Human Relations Coalition. And as some other previous speakers have said, we do live in interesting times, and in response to some unfortunate incidents, I saw a sign like this on Facebook. It says, "No matter where you're, you are from, we're glad you're our neighbor." And it started with a church, Emmanuel Mennonite Church in Harrisonburg, Virginia. You can see them on, they have a Facebook page called Welcome Your Neighbors, and their, their original signs were in Spanish, English, and Arabic, and when I saw it, I thought some other languages would be appropriate for Glendale, and they did, on their webpage had PDFs for Armenian, so I had Spanish, English, and Armenian put together. And that was about four weeks ago when I first looked at their website, and they had half a dozen other languages, French and Somali. And in the past few weeks, the last time I looked, they had added Hindi and Japanese and Chinese, German, and Swahili, and they've added versions for Canada with neighbors spelled with a U. So I just want to let people know that Glendale Human Relations Coalition has these available with little metal stakes, you can put them in the, in your yard, and we're asking a $5 donation to cover costs, and if anybody would like them, you can email me at gesja_underscoreemail@yahoo.com. Or if you'd like to get one tonight, we have a few in the car, and my husband will be down in the lobby in the next, you know, 15 minutes or so, if anyone would like to have them. And just with so much else being spread around, I'd like to spread a little neighborliness and, and try to maybe even stimulate conversations as, as people walk their dogs by your yard and things, you might even meet some neighbors you hadn't met before and chat with them. And since I have a few more minutes left, today is the deadline to make Arbor Day donations for trees, and we just heard that we lost a lot of trees in our parks and library spaces, and if you'd like to donate, you can still go online, glendalebeautiful.org, and you can donate by credit card right there. So thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon, that's a lovely idea. Both, both of those, the signs and the, and the trees. I'm sorry, I'm still stuck on melancholy.
Melancholy, yeah.
Melancholy, I just, I just can't get that out of my head. Okay, thank you, Sharon.
Well, Varsity Blues was a good movie.
Okay, John Ballen?
I'm not gonna back-end this, I'll front-end it. I'm asking you to instruct GDP, GDP to not enforce immigration laws. That is the ask here. Now I'm gonna digress. Today would have been my dad's 91st birthday. His parents came at the turn of the century, the 20th century, they were refugees from Russia, where they were subjected to pogroms. They immigrated here legally. 15 years later, the Armenian genocide happened, and a lot of Armenians subsequently came to America, especially after the fall of communism. All of us, many of us in this room, were immigrants or sons of immigrants in the last century. My dad fought in World War II. He got an education on a GI bill, he moved from Pennsylvania to California, built a life, gave me an education. I'm in Glendale now as a homeowner, I have a business in North Glendale, my son's going to the school. People who helped me with my business are undocumented. Kids in my kid's school are undocumented. So what I'm asking is that the precious taxpayer dollars that are being spent on law enforcement be focused on the needs of the community, such as crime, such as traffic enforcement and other issues that you guys are all well aware of, we need more traffic cops. If instructions come from the federal government to start sort of doing wholesale crackdown in immigration communities on peaceful neighbors, not criminal neighbors, but peaceful neighbors, law-abiding neighbors, it will impede the police department's ability to get undocumented help in solving crimes, and will make Glendale as a city overall less safe. Rampart, you guys remember the Rampart scandal with LAPD? Those guys were terrorizing the neighborhood, crime shot up, they were part of the crime problem, but as soon as a commission came in and cleaned up that, and LAPD started doing community policing, it was an area with lots of undocumented people, and crime dramatically decreased. So that is a case study in the perils of criminalizing everybody who's undocumented and how difficult that makes it for safety. In addition to that, we're a nation of immigrants. A lot of undocumented people in the city are not just from Latin America, they are actually Armenian, and so this is an issue that is close to this community and should be considered as such, that this is not just other people, these are people we know in our families. And so the ask is, you get a court order from the federal government, you gotta follow that. But Schiff, who spoke at Glendale Community College, has your back. The governor has your back, and we have legal resources to defend the city if it comes out strongly for creating a official, strongly worded sanctuary city, which I'm urging you guys to do in unambiguous language. Thank you for your time, thank you for efforts.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Ochoa, would you respond with our, how our police are addressing this issue?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Chief Castro has... Chief Castro has put out a policy statement to all of his personnel, including and especially our sworn field personnel, that would indicate that... I can read it right here to you with the help of our glasses here. Let's see. GPD, the Glendale Police Department, does not have the authority nor the responsibility to incarcerate or detain individuals solely based on immigration status. Our fundamental duties are based on public safety, serving the community while focusing efforts primarily on crime prevention and law enforcement. Our responsibility is to protect the lives of the community. We are sworn to serve and honor the established principles of democracy upon which this country was founded. That sentiment is what beats true for all of our police and fire personnel and frankly, all of our employees here with the City of Glendale, all 1584, until and unless this city council provides different policy leadership that would instruct the activities of the staff. There is a lawsuit that has been filed up north, I believe in the city of San Francisco, regarding the sanctuary city language and status and what that ultimately means. Mr. Garcia certainly can speak to that. But at this point, based on the council's profile of leadership, that has been the stance of our Glendale Police Department and our other employees.
And I would venture to say we all stand behind that statement and will continue to do so. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is the hearing on annual weed abatement program at 9/8.
Okay. And I'm opening the hearing. And Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, ma'am. This is the annual hearing that we have that follows the notice of the hearing that was done earlier this month. Basically, we tell all of the property owners who have properties that have been recognized by LA County pursuant to inspection that their property contains noxious weeds that they may be abated. They will be abated. And this is the only notice per the county that will be undertaken unless the cost of abatement exceeds $750. That abatement cost will go onto the property tax bill. But at this point, this effectively is a protest hearing. For anyone who received said notice can come to you. And as Mr. Kasakian, I believe, had noted, there is a representative from the county here from Department of Agriculture. So this is a hearing, and we would open to folks that would want to speak to you.
I have no cards, so I'm going to assume that there is no one here to protest this issue. So any questions from counsel? Okay. I will close the hearing. And do I have a motion?
I'll move the item. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is a hearing as well, Director of Community Development, regarding extension of an interim ordinance to establish interim development standards and identify procedures for ministerial approval of accessory dwelling units. B1 is a motion to issue and accept report. Two is an ordinance for introduction.
Okay. So I will open the hearing. And Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This item may be oddly familiar because counsel had taken this up just a matter of weeks ago, adopting the interim ordinance and preserving a local definition of what the ADUs would cover by way of state law, while you had directed staff to prepare a permanent ordinance, if you will, that would comply with the spirit and intent of what the state had been outlining. So as you recall, we had 45 days to come back with you with an extension pursuant to the law of that urgency ordinance, or the interim ordinance, rather. Rather than wait for the full 45 days, what with the municipal election coming, transition, we're going to have at least one new council member, we think it's prudent at this point to come back to you sooner than later, ask for the mandated extension for the 10 months and 15 days. If you want to extend again one more time beyond that, you can. If the work gets done in less time, certainly the council would be able to adopt an ordinance in a shorter period of time, but it at least gives the planning division staff the opportunity to prepare said ordinance, route it through Planning Commission, community stakeholders, and ultimately make its way back to city council in due course. So this is basically a step in the process. I would liken it to using a timeout in the third quarter versus at the end of the fourth quarter, just simply based on conditions that we can see towards the end of this particular game, again with elections, with schedules, and wanting to make sure we comply with the 45 days and not wanting to have a period that lapses where the interim ordinance is no longer in effect. So it's, nothing has changed from March, or from February 7th. We're just asking that you extend the ordinance to the 10 months, 15 days.
Any comments?
So we...
Pardon?
She did.
I did. Yeah. Councilmember Garpetian?
So we're extending it to 10 months and...
15 days.
15 days from the date that we introduced the ordinance.
It's from the date that the initial ordinance is set to expire on March 24th.
So maximum of one year.
So a year from the day you originally adopted the ordinance.
And within that one year, can we revisit this item?
Our hope is that we will, yes. Barring something that would drain staff resources from the planning shop away from this effort, our direction from council was to work with haste to bring this back to you sooner than later. But that'll take more than 45 days. And so this is just that next step in the process to extend the interim ordinance to... We're saying 10 months, 15 days. It could be shorter. Hopefully, it will be shorter, that we will be back before you with a final ordinance.
And before the final ordinance is drafted, basically, are we going to have a discussion on the council to give some direction as to where we want to be?
We would like to do a couple... That's a good question. We would like to do a couple of things. We certainly would be going through our normal process, where we go to Planning Commission and likely go out to stakeholder groups. But through briefings that we would have pursuant to city attorney's office, we can understand where the sensitivities are from council. And you've given us a great deal of what you would like to see individually by way of the public hearing that was held earlier this month. But as it'll go forward, it's a public document, I expect, like other ordinances, you certainly would have the ability to say, "I like this. I don't like that." And then in the context of the adoption of the ordinance, that you would be able to affect those changes if you didn't see everything that you wanted to see or you saw too much of any one thing. To the extent that we have introduced ordinances before and rather than adopt them, send them back to staff, we make additional changes, bring it back to you again, and then it gets introduced, I would expect that as something as dialogue-inspiring as this item had been earlier, that we'll probably be bringing it back a couple of times to you in the context of preparing that final ordinance.
Yeah, because I want the community to have a chance to give their input as to what their wants and likes and needs are before it goes to Planning Commission.
I think that'll be the order of the day by way of interaction with a lot of the neighborhood groups.
And keep in mind, the Planning Commission is part of the process where the public does provide input. But I think it would, in this case, given the amount of complexity involved and the fact that we've not had an ordinance regulating these, it would make sense to bring it to council, at least get some feedback and have the public provide input before we formally start putting pen to paper and drafting actual ordinance language. Okay. Absolutely.
So what we're doing is just giving staff more time to develop the ordinance, to give staff the time for outreach to the community, so everyone has a chance to give input on the ordinance, and then we will make the final decision eventually. Okay. I will have no cards for this item, so I'll close the hearing. And do I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Do I have a second?
Second. So that's the motion?
Oh, that's, yes.
Well, there's a motion, and there's the introduction of ordinance.
I'll move the motion.
Okay. And we have a second. A roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Thank you. Yes. And now the...
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. And a second, and that's all we need, right? Or we just need the introduction? Thank you.
Introduction of ordinances.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited time. Item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And City Manager, may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay. Daniel Brothman.
Hi, Mayor Devine and council members, staff. Thank you for giving me time to make a brief statement. Hopefully, I won't take the whole five minutes. My name is Daniel Brothman. I'm an adjunct professor at Glendale College. I moved to Glendale about a year and a half ago, and I just want to say thank you to all of you for your part in making Glendale such a great place to call home. I hope to stay here for as long as I can. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. As you know, Congressman Schiff held a town hall last week. I know, Mayor Devine, you were there. Maybe all of you were there. I don't know. In any case, we heard some very heartbreaking stories about people being affected by the policies and rhetoric coming out of Washington, whether it's the so-called travel ban, the newly aggressive immigration enforcement, or the increase in hate crimes. I'm sure you've all read about the killing of an Indian immigrant in Iowa by somebody who said, "Get out of my country." Very disturbing. Or recently, the death threats to Jewish community centers all around the country. In fact, I saw something that yesterday, there were 13 different threats made to Jewish community centers and synagogues, as well as toppling of headstones at cemetery. So it's a frightening time for many of us. But I feel the fear is most immediate for the families of undocumented immigrants right now, and that's what I wanted to talk about. I understand, I accept, that every country needs to be able to control its borders, and those seeking to come to this country should follow the rules. At the same time, I know that there are many hard-working, contributing people in our community. They've been living among us for sometimes decades, sometimes for most of their lives. They've become our friends. Not only that, from a purely selfish perspective, we rely on their services, their consumer spending, the taxes that they pay. In stepping up the deportations, the president says he's only going after violent criminals, but we know that's not true. Many people are being rounded up that are guilty only of misdemeanors. And in fact, nobody really knows what ICE's instructions are, which adds to the fear. People are wondering if they can go outside to shop, if they can go to the doctor, if they can send their kids to school. I see it, you know, in my classes, about 30% to 40% of my students are Latino, and there's fear, and there's crying, and it's difficult to teach. It's difficult for students to be successful, and they're worried about whether their parents will be home when they get home. So in general, the whole policy is being carried out the way the travel ban was carried out in a chaotic, haphazard way that's really designed to put people on edge. The city of Glendale obviously can't stop ICE from coming here to follow the orders that they're getting from their higher-ups, but we're under no obligation to make their job easier. I believe strongly that we should not share any information, and I appreciate the statement that you read out from the police chief, which I'm not familiar with in detail. So much of this is probably covered, but maybe not everything. I think we need to be clear that information sharing will not take place, will not allow ICE to use any of our facilities in any way. We should not allow them to use our police, of course, to assist in any way. We should never proactively turn people over to them. I would feel differently if this were a measured policy that was truly targeting dangerous criminals, but we know that that's not what this is about. I understand through the grapevine that some people are hoping to work with you, and I don't know if they've come to the staff yet, to craft a resolution, because I feel that the statement you read doesn't feel strong enough. I think we need to do something that's more public, that's clear. Whether we call ourselves a sanctuary city, I know that's loaded, and I, you know, I'm not going to make an opinion about whether that term itself should or shouldn't be used, but I think we should make a very strong statement, and we should publicize it widely to calm fears in the community and to show our Latino neighbors and friends that we have their back. So I urge you to work together and design and pass the strongest possible resolution. Thank you.
I just want to say that that town hall that Congressman Schiff held was powerful, and I did learn from it. He mentioned that we have, and there have been those that are creating a culture of fear in our society, and I regret that. Can only say that we will follow the police chief's statement and stand by that. And I think everyone in our community should know that we care about them, we are listening, we hear you, and when the time comes for us to do, to act, then we will. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brothman. Let's see. Mike Mulhill?
My name is Mike Mulhill. Mayor Devine, I was disappointed again two weeks ago when you were informed, and I informed the public, that leaving CalPERS cannot be done, and it is up to the state legislature, even though I already provided you and the public with many agencies who had already canceled their contracts with CalPERS. Professor Harry Zavos, a very well-respected attorney in Glendale, also heard what Professor Roderick Kiwick from Caltech said about leaving CalPERS, that it would cost us more money upfront, but in the long run, it would be cheaper for the stakeholders. Mayor Devine, I offered you a list of small cities and agencies who decided not to wait for the state to rescue them, but instead paid the blackmailers CalPERS their monies and canceled their contracts. Mayor Devine, as a retired school teacher, you are currently receiving a government pension for life. Your husband, a former government administrator for the city of Los Angeles, is receiving a six-figure income in retirement for life. Our city manager, assistant city manager, city attorney, and director of finance will all be receiving outrageous retirement pension benefits for life. Former city manager Jim Starbird, who retired a few years ago, is receiving yearly retirement pension benefit of $264,000 for life. Former assistant city manager Bob McFaul, yearly $163,000 for life. Former chief of police Ron DiPampa, yearly $214,000 for life. Former city attorney Scott Howard, $196,000 for life yearly, and the list goes on and on. Bob Elliott, director of finance, pulled the wool over your eyes when he stated that the average safety personnel retirement pension benefit was about $57,000, and non-safety was about $30,000. Was that average based on retirements since 1940, perhaps 1980, or 1960? You name the number. Mayor Devine, might I look at the average for the past five or 10 years, where today we have about 800 city employees earning between $100,000 and $300,000 plus, and their retirement pension benefit will be of equal magnitude? Council members, why are you accepting the misleading figures from staff of a retirement pension of $57,000 or $30,000 as insignificant or very little, when the average annual social security payment is about $16,000? And the maximum, even if your name was Bill Gates, is $36,000? Mayor Devine and council members, doesn't it bother you to know today we have more police officers and firefighters in retirement than currently working to protect the public? And yet, Councilman Najarian continues you want to have the very best employees that money can buy. This council has left the people of Glendale in 2015 with a staggering $22,710 per household debt to CalPERS and still growing. City manager, director of finance, Mayor Devine, and council members, please explain to your constituents our $22,710 per Glendale household debt to CalPERS has distinguished our dual city as the 33rd worst of all 509 California cities. has distinguished our jewel city as the 33rd worst of all 509 California cities. I would suggest you contact Professor Keewitt from Caltech and Nobel laureate Professor Stampy from Stanford University to come before this council and have them explain how getting out of Calpers is doable, and if you truly have the desire. Mrs. Devine, with all due respect, I am here to tell you, your colleagues, and the public, the city has the option to cancel Calpers contracts. All you have to do is have the desire and vision to pay our Calpers blackmailers upfront, so that in the long run, it would be cheaper for the taxpayers. Mayor Devine, I love my jewel city, Glendale. Please stop misleading the public that we cannot get out of Calpers. Yes, it will be hard and costly, but in the long run, it will be cheaper for the stakeholders and their children. It is not a state problem. It is a Glendale problem. Thank you.
Mr. Mulhill, with all due respect, I venture to guess that if we could come up with $1.2 billion today in cash... You may sit down. We probably would think about it, wouldn't we, Mr. Ochoa?
Certainly, you would have to think about it, but that's the fallacy in the argument that is continually proffered by Mr. Mulhill. Some of the cities that he's referring to have four retirees, and even then struggled after they left Calpers. I think he gravely misrepresents the meeting at which you were at, in which the professor from Caltech had acknowledged that if you wanted to leave, it would be extraordinarily costly, and so therefore you probably ought not leave or wouldn't leave, certainly not unless and until the state of California changed the state law, and after that law was fully adjudicated as it most certainly would be in a state like California. So it's wonderful for Mr. Mulhill to get up repeatedly and offer a great deal of partial information and use the claims of partial information against other folks, but I think he has to at least look in the mirror and say, "The things that he's saying really aren't necessarily very true." Some of it may sound true. Some of it may feel true. Most of it is not, unfortunately. Certainly, it's out of context.
Thank you. Elizabeth Batanza?
Hello, Mayor. Hello, City Council. Officers of the law, thank you. I just wanted to second these comments of Dan and John. I was part of the group that went to the Glendale Unified School District to urge them to pass a stronger resolution a couple weeks ago at their board meetings. And while they had originally come out with resolution language to have schools, Glendale Public Schools be safe zones, it was our belief that it was not strong enough or precise enough. And I would just echo that. While I'm glad that the chief of police has issued that statement, it sends a much stronger and broader message if it's coming from the mayor and from the city council. We have plenty of issues, namely with speeding, which my five-year-old back there can tell you about, that I would much rather have law enforcement taking care of things like traffic, speeding, petty crime, theft, things like that, rather than being co-opted to participate in these ICE raids or to cooperate with policies at the federal level that I think we will look back on in history and be ashamed of what's going on. So I just wanted to urge you that we look forward, as members of the community, working with you on passing a resolution, sanctuary city, whatever you want to call it, but something that is precise, specific, and clearly, more clearly outlines what will and will not happen in terms of law enforcement. So, thank you. And I'm happy to pay my taxes for the retirement of teachers and police officers. I'm a teacher myself. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Chinook Ramirez?
Thank you. For the record, I'd like to complain. I just had Aaron, the young man who stands behind and helps you fill out the forms, and his supervisor, John, standing behind, were rude, obnoxious, and told me to not disturb the meeting. I've never, ever disturbed a meeting. I simply said, "Wow, oh," and that was signed for him to come over and single me out. These two idiots, Aaron and John. If you have no class, then get the hell out.
Ms. Chinook, please.
Yes.
Let's refrain from that language.
No, refrain is... No. Again, out of anger and out of rightfully, because I respect myself, I stand in myself, and I believe in what I do. I fight hard for what I do. I will not be crucified or demonized by somebody who thinks they can stick their finger telling me I'm disturbing the meeting, when I'm sitting back there quiet, like I've always done for the several years I've come here. Ever, never have I been attacked, ever. Having said that, you've got some of these cocky gringos who come here and talk about abuses by Washington. Well, let me make it very plain and clear. Washington, for the first time in years, Donald Trump, el jefe, the great Moses, has actually enforced the rule of law, something that the justices, judges, nor attorneys have been able to do. Furthermore, many of us are homeless because of attorneys falsely representing you. And I've got names of them that I will be disclosing, too. Again, unethical attorneys, unethical attorneys who don't abide by the rule of law. Does that make a man racist because he wants to stand for the rule of law, enforce the rules across America? He's not a racist. Finally, we have a man who stands for something, and he wants to defend the American people, legal, law-abiding American people. I came here by the rule of law. I didn't swim the Rio Grande. I am proud of that. I fought hard of it. And by the way, I didn't join the gang. I didn't graffiti. I don't vandalize. I don't steal. But God forbid, I stand up to any of these cocky idiots. Then what happens? I get thrown out. I get banned, or I get attacked. I believe in myself, and I stand for myself because I respect myself. That's why I'm here. And furthermore, I am proud to say that Donald Trump is a man of greatness. He fought all the way to where he is. He is elegant. He is opulent. He believes in taste, and he loves America, something that these illegal gangbangers and aliens don't believe in. Look at the graffiti. Look at the Latino communities. They're a disaster. And they talk about Rampart East Allee. I lived there. And what was it? It was shameful. You have vandalism, illegal break-ins, graffiti. You have drugs. And people like me who stood up and called the police and exposed the gangs, the drugs, the graffiti, the vandalism, I didn't see him, or the teacher, or his son, or the father of a son, exposing them. They wouldn't stick their necks out, because they'd be homeless and/or gang stalked. So again, who has the balls to stand up? Certainly not that cocky gringo, because they need, or the teacher. They don't want to stick their hands out. They've got children. They're not going to expose the gangbangers, the drug dealers. They're not going to do that like I did, because they'd be living on the streets. That teacher, no, he just wants more Latinos so he can have a pension. I'm not thinking about my career. I'm thinking about what I have to do for this country, and that is fight for the human dignity, the decency, the righteousness of this country. We have gone down the tubes. We have every form of cesspool. We have drugs. We have crack, cocaine, and every form of just cesspool trash. Nobody stands for human dignity anymore. Nobody. And nobody will stick their heads out and their necks out, certainly not many officers. But those few who have been killed in the line of duty, God bless them, because they stood for something, and they got killed. May they rest in peace. But I don't see any of you stick your necks out for anybody, and certainly for the people, the American people, that nobody cared for, or the beloved military veterans that nobody cared for, or stuck their heads out for him or for them. What about John Brewer? What about Sheriff George Pyle? They're being crucified because they're standing for the rule of law. Do any of you do that? No. But I'm proud to stand for something like they do. And they also stand and protect the people of America, the people of America, the legal, law-abiding American citizens, middle-class America who is today homeless, impoverished, and that is on the streets. And our military veterans, they are on the streets today. Who is helping them? No one. Human Relations Commission and all these other commissions are too busy aiding and abetting and harboring these fugitives, criminal, illegal wetbacks and gangbangers. But nobody protects the American citizen, and God bless the grand Moses. Donald Trump, he is protecting the American people. God bless America.
Ms. Ramirez, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
I'll settle.
God bless Donald Trump.
Thank you. Well, there were a lot of things in there that I disagree with, but I'll just kind of not... Does anyone have anything to respond? Sinanian, would you?
And I...
I mean, no.
Yeah, I mean, given the circumstances, maybe we shouldn't respond?
Right. Yeah.
Our outreach team has worked with Ms. Ramirez, so I would not.
Okay, next item, please.
Motion to adjourn in a second, please.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So...
Second?
Yeah.
We're adjourned at 7:25. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.